Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this time now. May you lead this weekend, give us wisdom and direction in everything that we say and do, and we give this time over to you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand at the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call for us, Laura?
Hello? Yes. Renee? Yes ma'am. Lee?
Yes.
Here he is, excuse. Christie? Here. Laura? Here. And Jeffrey?
Here. Next, we have the approval of the agenda, someone would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
One second. Word by Lee, any discussion?
Thank you.
Here's none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes. If anyone would like to make a motion.
Make a motion to pay the bills? No, no.
Past meeting minutes.
Oh, past meeting minutes. I'll second.
Well, first of all, are you making the motion to do the past meeting minutes, Renee?
No.
No. So do you want to make the motion?
I will make the motion to approve the minutes from last month.
Motion by Christie, do we have the support?
Support.
Support by Noah, any discussion? None, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report, and if you could relay those numbers for us, Christie.
You have the information right through?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to let you know, the bank statements come like two days after the first of the month, so it took me a little bit, that's why it was a min-just report.
It's tight time.
General fund, we are at 1,198,499.68. In our savings, we have 957,194.11. We have two credit union funds, and we have class accounts and fire operating of 695,388.88. Sewer fund, 460,626.62. And trust and agency, we have 587,595.21.
Perfect, thank you. We'll put that on file. Next, we have to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
And do we have a second?
I'll support it.
Word by Noah, any discussion? None, roll call vote.
Renee? Yes ma'am. Noah? Yes. Lee?
Yes.
Christie? Yes. Yes, Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department report, to achieve?
67 request last month, still on the business plan. We did, again, our coverage of Thunderbird last weekend, we'll continue to do that every weekend if there's a rain. We'll be out there until September sometime, we'll do some work with heavy rescue, it's coming along, we're looking at probably end of this month, maybe middle of next month, they had some problems getting some of the product in, but everything else, I think, other than that, nothing much was happening.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have the planning commission report, if you would, Lee.
On April 26th, two items in new business, first being a site plan review for 5837 Road, so pavilion for at the Eiffel Bar. One was present, answered a few questions that we had at the planning commission, site plan was approved. Second item was in addition to the agenda, which was a draft amendment, zoning ordinance, including amendment with changes to the animal section, gardening, site drainage, and existing residential use of commercial zone property. The planning commission reviewed the draft, which we have been in discussion for a couple months on the different things. Motion for approval before we hold up a public hearing next month, any more?
Thank you. And if you would, the zonal appeals report, Noah, I did have one small thing on this just late last week as I was looking through it, you mentioned Charles Nash here, Charles Nash is at the county.
Yeah. Let me have one here.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, all numbers were present. Craig Monet, motion to change the public comment, to be able to speak as each agenda item arose, said Mr. Nash motioned, and I supported it, all in favor. The approval of January 4th, 2022 minutes, motion by David Glick to accept, with Scott Holland supporting, all in favor. ZBA 22-01 at 1024 East Riley Thompson Road, motion by Marvin Nash to accept building per specification for the add-on, and supported by myself, all in favor, variance passes. ZBA 22-02, 4160 Hyde Park Road was denied, no open business in our one zoning can be accepted. David Glick motioned to deny, with Scott Holland to support, the variance was denied and all supported that. ZBA 22-03 from 1390 East Lakewood Road, motioned by myself to approve building of pole barn as presented and supported by Scott Holland, all in favor, the variance passed. Communications mainly from Hyde Park Chester sanitation situation, and there was no old or new business, no further public comment, we adjourned at 7:23 PM.
I'm sorry, is there public comment now, or? There, well, there is. So that was just a report on the zoning appeals, and which was mentioning the public comment for that meeting, so similar to minutes, just a report. And now we're going into our first public comment, so we have two public comment sections, and the reason I like having two is because in the last one, they can be longer, they can be question and answer sessions with the board, they can be off topic on whatever we might want to discuss. And the first public comment is more business oriented, please try to stick to that three-minute limit, everyone in here looks extremely reasonable, so I won't turn the timer on, the beep is annoying, but we can use it if we need to, and on agenda items preferably. So if anyone would like to make a public comment at this time, if you come up to the lectern, state your name for the record, and let us know what you think.
My name is Dan Tardani, and my wife and I own a home at 2915 Lakeshore Road on Twin Lake, and I just wanted to come today and talk about our boat launch on Twin Lake. Our current situation is not good, I know of a few people that have owned pontoon boats on Twin Lake who have said they might not even use the lake this year because it's so pathetic. And I guess I just wanted to maybe put a little pressure on you to maybe talk to the county because I realize it is county-owned. So what I've done for you is I took some pictures today of some model out on Twin Lake, it's me, and different depths, and so they're all three, all three different.
They're all three different depths, sorry.
Oh, sorry. They're all the same. It's backup.
The dates are all the same dates?
Yep.
Wow, it's really going down, right?
The water level is very, very low.
Yes.
And you really, you really have to almost get a car, if you're gonna have a halfway decent pontoon boat go in there, you're probably gonna have to get your car wet by about 30 feet.
We almost lost our truck last year.
Yeah, and I've actually been told by one of the neighbors in the previous year, but it is getting to the point of our lake is a little bit unusable, and anybody I know that tuckers live on, anybody who lives on Twin Lake can attest.
It's nature, it's nature, you can't get, you know, we have high water, low water. I've lived there a long time, and that's, it comes to go.
It could be dredge with what I'm saying.
Yeah, I get the.
It's not just the level of the lake, it's when you back up what has happened last year especially, people backed in, they got stuck, they ran their tires, and they made all these, so what's happened is we look at it, we just see water, but when you are down there, and we put our wave runners in last year, you go from leading to here instantly. I know because I did it, trying to put in my wave runner. So because of all of this, people aren't able to put in their boats, their wave runners or anything, and it's not just the people that live on the lake. A lot of people are like, oh, this is a pet project, don't call it that. We have a lot of renters, we have a lot of people that come from out of town, we have a lot of people that rent boats, that live, that come and rent homes that are on the lake, their cabins, so it affects, and those people bring in not only renters and money for the boats, but they also buy gas, they go to the overboard, they spend a lot of money in our little township. So it's not just the boat launch that we're looking at, it's the overall thing, so I thank you very much for bringing it up.
Yes, and you're welcome, you can keep those forward.
And they charge to use it, but they don't maintain it.
They're only allowed to take care of, because that was one of my concerns too, is they, correct me on this if I'm wrong, Jeffrey, they're only allowed to take care of the part that's above the water, as soon as you cross into the water park, they're not allowed to do anything with it, the county park, it's DNR. Am I right on that?
Noah, you don't need an eagle permit, but I can talk about lake levels and boat launch stuff on an extensive basis at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I'm dealing with Goose Lake Lake, and boat launch there is terrible, and it really needs some work. Also, I would like to propose a thing of making that lake a motorless lake, is that possible?
Which lake?
Probably possible.
Because there's no inlet or outlet, so any gas that's on the water stays there, it doesn't go anywhere, it can't go anywhere. And it's such a small lake anyway, and shallow, that you really don't need any motors, so it's such a clean lake now, I'd hate to see it pollute. And also, the park really needs a lot of work, and it would be nice to have a beach, but there's so much seaweed, and if you can get that seaweed out and get some sand in there, then make a nice beach for the family. And I actually have a bobcat that I'm willing to help do that, so that's excellent.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was your name?
James Holt, he's gonna be able to help me with that.
Is that Catawba Park you're talking about?
No.
Yes, I knew that place.
Oh, that is?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I liked that one, I liked that like last month. It's beautiful, it's really beautiful, I talked to a guy that lives on it.
Kids can't swim there because of the weeds, and there's like a paint, and then there's water, there's no beach or anything.
And the playground, that's a nice, that's a nice little, it is.
Looking into it.
Yep.
Yep. For the playground.
Yeah.
Talked about that last month.
Thank you.
Going to your dad's.
Thank you.
Justin Farm, 54, 78, also Rob. Just want to touch on the discussion guys we're gonna have with the land sale policy, and I read through that, and the idea to have them land sales over three meetings, I think would really work well for the township, and for buyer, and all across the board, that looks very reasonable to me. You know, basically, it would go down to, I mean, people are gonna pay what something's worth at any given time, I mean, the number could change by the day, it could change by the buyer, there's a lot of variables there, and it's just the least, to me, the least amount of money a township spends, and the easiest way for people to come up with reasonable enough. I think that's a great idea.
Thanks.
I forgot something. The seaweed, especially last year when the lake level went down, the seaweed was just terrible, overtook the whole lake, we couldn't even go out with a motor without getting plugged up, and we were wondering if there's some way of harvesting the seaweed out instead of chemicals.
A professional lake management does do some stuff like that.
What he's got to do to end that now?
It's a special assessment disaster, but yeah, we can, we can talk about that more.
Yeah, what's assessment?
All right, perfect, we'll move on to the decision items. The first one is Board of Review property, poverty exemption update. Now, the state laws on this had changed, and before it was by the judgment of the Board of Review, now they're making it so it has to be more objective, which is reasonable direction, but it means if you're $1 over the amount where you wouldn't get the poverty exemption, then that's the cutoff on it, and I talked with Donna, the assessor, through the county about adjusting this and making sure that all of our stuff would be correct. And so the way it is set up here is that if you meet the parameters, then you get the 100%, if you're from $1,000 to $5,000 over, you get 50% from $1,001,000 to $10,000 over, it's 25%. And that gives some of that, some of the flexibility that the Board of Review previously had, but now that it has to be with objective numbers, so that's the way this is set up.
So I make the motion to amend the township's specific requirements for poverty exemption as updated.
Motion by Noah.
Second.
Second by Christie, any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Noah? Yes. Christie? Yes. Lee? Renee? Yes ma'am. Yes, Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2022-16 for ARPA fund expenditures. Now, the ARPA funds have been coming down the pipeline, everyone, I think, has known that, the feds passed it, a political move that was, that was interesting at the top level. And so at first, they weren't sure what the rules are gonna be, the rules were very restrictive also at that time, and basically you could use it to expand water, city water, you could use it to expand sewer, or you could use it to expand broadband, which is why at that time I'd especially looked into broadband and contacted 15 companies, and I've been ongoing, intensifying discussion with Comcast, because I recently contacted the Utilities Commission through the state, because I tried for over a year to get a map from them and could not. So, which I tried to keep those relations good, but at this point, it was worth risking. And so they ended up having a final ruling on this, that comes to the overforder pages, is the final set of rules, but it became much, much more lenient, and so if you're getting under $10 million, it's point lenient, it just has to be on government services, government services, including basically anything except for the things that they've restricted, one of those being debt, so you can't spend on debt, but otherwise, it ends up being pretty flexible. Now, obviously, there's an ongoing discussion that I have every week with different people about parks and lakes concerning these funds, and we have, I think there'll be an ongoing discussion among the board about those, there has been so far. These things that I proposed in here are where I believe there is common ground among the boards, the things we can start moving on. The first reporting period ended April 30th, and I wanted to get by that, I wanted the final rules to be in place, I wanted it to pass the first reporting period so that we know things are working. And local municipalities, townships are having trouble across state with their reporting, but ours went through and we got the confirmation, so we're in good shape. So I wrote up a resolution, which is a potentially a little bit of overkill, and I think everyone's still figuring out what needs to happen, but I ran it through the auditor, and he thought it was a good idea in a good style. So, and then the things that I had included in here are the projected, or the projects that are contracted with Meskeen County Road Commission, the security monitoring, just the doors and ballot box, which the state is probably gonna change the law on that here soon, so we'll have to have it anyways, upgrade for the audiovisual system in here, because obviously, anyone that's tried to watch the videos, it's not great, but I wanted them to be recorded and posted, and so Ellen Randlars, and we got a simple one set up with the idea of updating the future. So that's in here, and?
Updating the website.
Updating the website, and the website is obviously, it's older, it's not in great shape, so I'm looking at that, the quotes coming in are very different, so that'd be a little bit of an ongoing thing, and establishing ordinances and other documents online through Unicode, and I would get that established and up and running first before we start switching over the website. And so that's what's included in here.
How many security cameras does the township already have?
None.
None? We don't have security cameras over?
No, the ones I, the ones I put out, right, so there was, there was a discussion or a concern over some security issue, the township didn't have any security cameras, I bought cheap ones on Amazon and threw those up pointed towards the doors, but then there were various rumors spread about these finding employees and stuff, you guys know the politics. And so with the idea, I wanted to get around to having more, better, more professionally installed system, but I also didn't want to just throw out a few thousand dollars right away, and I wanted to get some quotes and look at things. The quotes have come in with a range, a few thousand dollar range, but the one that I think would probably be best is Nevada, and just because of those concerns, I don't think setting up the inside would actually be an issue, but at least just having them on the doors in case those were to be compromised at some point, it'd be good to have a record of that. And then the ballot box, we have up front for election integrity, there, well, the state is looking at changing the law so that there has to be a camera on ballot boxes, so we might as well get that set up.
I agree with that. Amen.
And then the cameras that I bought online because there were concerns and rumors spread about the employees, we just, they're non-operational at this point, so, which they haven't been for quite a while.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Matt? Yes, question, she's like, this isn't all the funds, right, this is just like?
No, this will be a relatively small portion of the funds.
Yeah, keep talking about it and seeing what we need to do.
Yes, so the biggest piece that would include funds on this, because right now we're contracted with the road commissioner, the contract we're looking at in this meeting, is $197,000. And so that's, that's the biggest piece of these, the rest of them, hopefully, the website could fluctuate a decent amount, one quote is $24,000 to redo the website, I have another quote, which that's a little less than four, so quite a range there. Completely different structures for how it would be done. And so that's, that, and then the AV system, the AV systems came in at a lot more, more than I would expect, and so a little over $10,000 probably for that type of system in here. Other than that, everything would be under $5,000.
What about, are we talking about this building with, isn't there like leaks and we need a new roof and?
So there can be extensive stuff, I mean, this building was built in the 1970s, and obviously, we have filing cabinet issues with spates, and it'd be nice to expand the building and redo it in major ways, but if we're, I mean, if we're talking about all this stuff, the little over $8,000 is gonna go really quick between roads, and if we have a discussion on parks and lakes and some of these other things, so it's, I mean, it's definitely a balancing act to be able to spend it in a reasonable way. We've got, one of the air conditioning units didn't work last summer on the roof, and it's torn apart right now, and we have to have another check now, it's warmer, that you can check the fluid levels. But our newest air conditioner out of the four of theirs from 1994, and so it's, I mean, that can cost a lot of money, you know, if we need to or should replace that. I think maybe sealing the roof makes it last for a lot longer, it would make sense probably if there was a major redo on this building to peak it, because it's not that big of a building, so I don't think it would need to have a flat roof. But to the extent that we spend money in those directions, we can't spend money in other directions, and I think doing it on the roads allows us to help with the budget quite a bit, while making the budget in good shape over the next couple of years also. And so, I mean, my proposal will be moving forward, that we spend at least half the money on roads, which beats up half the money.
Back to cameras, just to know that the security isn't that well here, when it's just us ladies, and there's no men here, there's no cameras watching who comes in and out, just the protection of us when we're handling quite a bit of money during tax season, that season come, there's, one of, one of the deputies had been mentioned the other day, well, no one would know if something happened to us until the next day. Nobody.
And I have, I have in the quotes, which are in the reference packet, the reference packet is obviously a bit, has traditional larger than the board packet. Well, I didn't include the 400-page final whole document on ARPA fund, I only included a 44-page document on it. But I have, as part of that quote, I've got a quote for security button, under the desk if there was a major immediate emergency at the front desk, so those, those weren't too bad.
Got to be proactive and react.
Ideally, there's a balancing act, but yes. Any other questions among the board about the resolution?
I think the, the resolution is not, the dollar amounts aren't set in stone, the usages aren't set in stone, this is just the beginning, with the way that Jeff explained it to me.
Well, so the way I wrote it, you know, because we have, the government should be clunky in some ways, that's, that's certainly true, and, and important, and everyone gets frustrated with that, but there's an immense amount of utility in that, I think it's clunky in the wrong areas and too smooth in the wrong areas as well. But nevertheless, especially with the logistical issues that are happening in the economy now, so if we, the reason I didn't write it up with approval of specific companies is because if we approve this, and then I go to one of the companies, and I go to the security company and say, all right, we want you to install yours, it's the best price, it looks like it's gonna work pretty good, and let's, let's move forward, and they're like, that's great, we have things on back order for eight months, then I'm probably gonna switch to a different company. And so I wrote it up here as the, all of the things that I planned being less than $5,000 work with the purchasing policy anyways, the only one that is the larger amount is the audiovisual system in here, which they all, they all came in at over 10 grand, less than 15 grand.
I make the motion to approve Resolution 22, 2022-16 for ARPA fund expenditures.
Motion by Noah, supported by Lee, any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Noah? Yes. Lee?
Yes.
Renee? Yes ma'am. Christie? Yes. Laura? Yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the land sale policy, and we heard the one public comment on that, and so the way, the way I've written this up, because I came up with these different potential solutions, these different options, the way I've written this one up, which falls, the major change falls under 2B, I also corrected it on a typo and a couple of other things, but 2B is that we would, instead of getting the realtor appraisals, we would obtain a suggested value from the township's assessor, as a guy decided minimum bid unless a more substantial process is considered necessary by the supervisor and board, just like the rental house that we have coming up, that obviously needed a professional $500 appraisal. So the piece that Jesse had talked about is going over three meetings, which I thought was, it's a potential decent idea, so that in, in the first meeting, we would set how we're going to set the price. In the second meeting, we'd actually put it up for bid after that process has happened over the previous month, and in the third meeting, we'd open the bids. I have not written that policy up specifically with that in, in here, so if you wanted to make a motion adjusting that, it'd have to be a verbal motion to adjust that, and I can write it up to, to make it in that direction afterwards. We ended up getting the multiple appraisals, like was proposed before, Lexi, it was, it was a struggle to get them for $50, we'd been getting them for $50 from the realtors for the market analysis before, because various people knew people. And so once you start going beyond that, which we're, we're able to get it to work, but once you start going beyond that, the appraisals come in, $300 to $500 for an appraiser to do them, a piece, and sometimes for a realtor to do them as well. And the assessing numbers that we've looked at so far with these properties has always been conservative, sometimes quite conservative, which I, which I find, find odd, I find a little surprising, but nevertheless, it's been consistent. And the market is up right now, so a market analysis raises those prices in comparison to the true cash value that the assessor does come up with. Well, I'm, I think it makes sense to either go with the assessor, the way it's written up, or we could adjust it to go over the three meetings if, if we would like. But we definitely want to sort it out, there's also been the, the question of doing it through a realtor, which is an obvious potential solution, but I think there's, I think there's significant potential problems with it too, because you have the idea of which realtor are you choosing, are we doing it on each property, we're choosing a separate realtor, are we doing larger swaths of land where we're choosing a realtor, how do we do that with a request for proposals when everyone knows somebody? And then when you're actually striking the deal, you're now doing the deal more, more behind the scenes, which makes it smoother and easier as far as the process goes, but it's going to generate a ridiculous number of rumors, for sure. So I tried to keep it organically going through the board.
I like the assessor's true cash value numbers, I like, I like going by that myself.
That eliminates cost and bureaucracy.
Yep. That's why I like it.
Thoughts among the board and/or, and/or motion?
So if I was to make a motion, I would base it on the assessor's true cash value numbers?
So the way.
And acquire the three meetings?
So the way this land sale policy in here is written has been adjusted, I adjusted 2B to be by the township's assessor value.
So as it's written?
So as this copy is written, in this So as this copy is written in this package, it's adjusted for the assessor value. Now, it doesn't include the three meeting option as it's written. So if you just want the assessor direction, then it's good. You just make a motion to approve this land sale policy. If you think it should be over three meetings of the first meeting determining what, how the process should go, the second meeting actually setting the minimum bid after that has occurred, and then the third of opening bids, then you would have to include that vertically in the motion.
But doesn't a realtor use cash value like the assessor?
They, well, they use, they generally use comparable.
Then that's not the other than cash values amount?
The assessor's is.
Is conservative. Just like.
And do you just, well, help us with the sold rate? Just kind of compare what it is.
Based on, yeah, as close to where the property is and based on the size.
Well, there are a couple of real estate agents in here. I'd like to hear who they are to say, I would too.
We can, yeah, we can do that if we want because it'd be really nice to resolve this before the next two items, which are the land sale.
Yeah. Dan, you or me?
Did you? Go ahead. Do you want to call on somebody?
How about both? Sure. My name is Marilyn Tucker at 2747 Lakeshore Road. I've been there in Lake since 88, 98, sorry. I hear you saying that realtors are charging a fee to tell you how much this is worth? I have never heard. Have you ever heard of a realtor charging a fee to tell somebody what something's worth?
While I have heard of it.
We don't do it.
We don't do it.
No, we don't do it. These are free. We can tell you for free what we think something will sell for and because we're both professional active realtors, we know what the market is. We can tell you. I saw in your discussion from last time, which is why here, some of the prices that were suggested for some of the properties and I don't know that I agree completely with what was suggested in your.
I've seen no version of agreement, so.
Oh, I understand. Actually, they're all estimates. They're all estimates, but and figuring out what a realtor, how a realtor comes up with the amount that we suggest for a price. Let me go back a year. We go back a year at sold properties. In this case, a lot of times lately, we've been going back six months because lately the market has been crazy. Yeah. We see a little turn in that coming up, but you know, who knows what the crystal ball says. So for that, we would go back at six months or a year and look at other properties that have sold similar to the one in that we're looking at. And then we get a, for a home, for example, price per square foot. So we get an average price per square foot for an average and then we look at condition, up or down, depending on what, how the house presents itself. For a vacant land, we look at location, of course. Topography, of course. You know, a swamp isn't going to sell the same as something high on hill, for example. We rule out waterfront or we neglect waterfront, whatever those are. And then we get a price per acre sold and then multiply that by the questionable piece and that's how we come up with price. And they're, of course, they're subjective, of course, that's our recommendation. But aside from doing small corrections, we're very, very close to what an appraisal will come in at and I would bet both of us could come up with an amount for free and save you $500 just starting an appraisal.
Thank you. That's beautiful. Thank you. Okay. And Dalton Township residents? Yeah. I, they have a vested interest. They are tax paid. They live here. Right. So they want to make sure that Dalton Township is going to have the best coming in also.
Yeah, essentially, they would be volunteering.
Right. Which is what they would do no matter where it was, but especially with the fact that they both are Dalton Township residents.
I'm actually not a resident.
Okay. You're the law.
We pay a lot more in taxes because we're not residents.
Right. That's true. Good point. The vested interest.
And I would do it for free as well, but Marilyn was very correct in what she said. We look at square footage, like for instance, on the house, I don't know if, I didn't even know this was up for sale.
672 square feet.
It's 672, yeah. I knew that. I'm familiar with the house. In fact, I was going to question if it ever came up for sale and that I might be interested and I was almost going to ask if you got keys on it right now, but.
Well, that leads to a very interesting discussion.
So.
So I went to it yesterday.
Yeah.
And it is a liability right now, major.
Right, it's in rough shape.
It's, it's not just rough shape. It's completely open and anybody could go in and walk in and fall down those stairs. There's no railings, there's no nothing, there's an active leak in the basement, the windows are busted, it's asking for some trouble. So we need to get locks on that door as soon as possible.
Right, so yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's a disaster. That's why I'm trying to fix it. So, but we need, we need some sort of policy. So far, the land sale policies have been a bit of a mess for the last, I don't know how long we've been about this, right, since November of 2020. And so we need some sort of policy that's going to work. We can go with realtors that live in the township and who want to volunteer. We, I mean, at that point, so if they decide not to, then we're, then we're stuck and we're back at, we have to review the policy again because you guys, I mean, normally, if you're being the selling agent, you'd make money on your commission. In this case, you would not. So it just depends on how much people want to volunteer that time for doing these for free.
It was offered. I think we should take it and it makes sense. I make a motion. You guys think? I'm not exactly sure how to word it, so that's why I'm holding back. I'm not sure. And I definitely like spreading it out over three months also because I think that especially with the market the way it is right now, it's, everything is going so quickly, I think we'll just need to not have to be such a pull, you know, a grab. It just seems, it seems like we push things through so fast, other people that they have been more, haven't had an opportunity because that was so fast. So I don't, I don't like the, just the land grab. I do think, I do like the three-month timeframe, especially when it comes to giving everyone an opportunity to be able to bid. I'm not sure how to word that, so.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the updated land sale policy with the addition of the land sales to go to be over a three-month period.
I second that.
Okay, so the motion as it is, is the land sale policy that's written here, correct? So it would be the land sale, there was, there was no other adjustment other than over three months, right? So it's the land sale policy as written here.
Between assessors.
Except for over three months.
Okay.
No, you have to read the policy. It says with the assessor unless the board or the supervisor says we need to.
And so with the adjustment for the three months, that first meeting being determined as how we're going to do it, it will default to the assessor's writing that amount unless in that meeting or determines that we should do something different or more extensive.
Yep.
I mean, you've got, he's got it written in, so if we need to go more extensive than the assessors, then the board and the supervisor can make that determination.
So with the motion, the way that you presented it, does that still include that we'll pay an assessor instead of using the free?
We pay the assessor 94 grand a year.
Pay the assessor anyway.
Okay. So it's not going to cost Dalton Township more money?
No. That's what I'm looking at. That's correct. That's the guy responsible.
Well, you seconded it, right?
I did.
All right. Any more discussion on the board? Roll call vote.
Noah, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, next, we have the 5.6 acres on Russell. That's up for bid. And so on this, well, this is the one that was triggering a re-review of this and we had the original realtor appraiser was 252 to 28 with Cross's letter that we sent to her. She said that it could be reasonable at that number, of course, it just depends on what it sells for. We had another comparison drawn up that didn't come to a specific conclusion, just showed a bunch of comparisons, another realtor data market analysis and brought it out at 34.9. The tax assessor came in that it would be reasonable for true cash value somewhere between 17 and $20,000. And so on this, we have all of those numbers to work with. And if we're going with the free meeting policy, as of now, it would be determining which way we're going to do it for putting it up for bid next month for opening bids the month after that. So it just depends on which way we'd like to do it, based off of assessor's numbers, which we technically already have them, but just see them again next month or if we want to do it.
Technically, this has been, this has been at the board for.
Been going for a while.
More than three months.
More than three months.
Are you looking for a minimum bid?
Yes.
We could do a minimum bid now.
And are you going to join them?
It says as a whole.
As a whole.
Yes, so you're going to set one price for all?
All four.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what all those numbers are for.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm going to make the motion to put the four parcels up for bid as a whole for a minimum of 22.5.
All right, is the motion for 22.5?
Minimum 22.5.
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
I think that's low.
That's too low? Okay. Well, when I looked at, when I looked at the original realtor's appraisal, 252, and then you look at the assessed value of 17 to 20.
I mean, the determination is a minimum, not an asking price, so it's different. We have, we have numbers ranging from 17 to 34.9, right? It's a range, which is, you know, why, I mean, some version of policy.
You had a bid on this one, right? Right?
No.
No.
Well, this is the one Cross suggested a number at just over 17, like 17,000 to $40, I think. Can I make sure it's right?
But if you get four bids all for 22.5, then that is. Well.
Well, and so the question becomes, for a minimum, right, it should be that, all right, if we get no bids for that, then we move on with our lives. We're not willing to accept lower than that. And if, and if someone comes in over that, so we sell it, we don't say, oh, oh God, we wish we set the minimum more, where the minimum should be.
So let me ask this, if we do this for 22.5 and we get no bids and six months down the road, someone says, hey, I just got an inheritance and I really want to put a bid on.
Then they can go through the whole process.
They request this. All right, so we have a motion for 22.5. No second? Do we have a second or do we have another motion?
I'll make a motion to put all four parcels as a whole for 28,000.
All right, we have a motion for 22.5, we have a motion for 28.
Do you have a comment?
That's just like the premium.
Yes.
Speak out loud.
Right. But yeah, I mean, so at that point, the question becomes why, why are we seeing it?
So if it was already put up for 28, can nobody?
With zero bids.
No.
It's too high. Zero bids, too high, zero bids.
Thank you. It's not buildable.
All right.
It's not buildable.
Christie's withdrawing, so we still, we just have a single motion for 22.5.
If you put it at 20, it's worth 28, somebody will bid 28. I'll tell you that all day long.
So we have a second by Renee for 22.5. Is there any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Lea?
Yes.
Christie?
No.
Lori?
Jeffrey?
I'm still thinking. It was a buck. No, I'm thinking, I'm still, I'm wobbly.
I don't think it's going to sell, but, but I, I'll go yes. So if someone wants to bid on it, they can bid on it. If they don't, then we can move on from this property.
It's 22.5. Please, I want to bid.
Why, I want to do it. No.
All right, motion passes 22.5 for that one. Next, we have 2370 Duff Road up for bid. So this is the history of the rental house there, which I found out about it in the winter after I got in because the family was having trouble with the water, didn't realize the township had a rental house. Township should not have a rental house, in my opinion, and then they should have a family that has having issues with the water. Fix that, cost a few thousand dollars and then try to find the septic because no one knew the last time that had been pumped, that took some effort because it had been ripped over, so obviously an issue. The renter at the time had mentioned that it would be reasonable to sell the property and I agreed, but it was given to the township, it was needed over 1959 with a restriction on deed, didn't want to get into the legal technicalities at the time and other things that were going, of course. And so when we went back around to it for this budget, either money should be put in to fixing it up, something in that direction along with the rent being raised, because the rent was at $600 a month for a house on the lake, or ideally, we could sell it off, checked with the title company, they said that funds are a use for the township, double checked with, for that opinion with the lawyer and he confirmed it, so it is possible for us to sell it and that's why we're seeing it now. And then I didn't, of course, I wasn't going to try to get a family out of the township rental house in the winter, so that would have been quite ridiculous. And so I had asked her what time would be reasonable for her and she said spring and it ended up working out for April. And the paperwork wasn't great on that because when she come in, I can't remember if it was six years ago, nine years ago, somewhere in there, there should have been some sort of security deposit, I assume there was, but we didn't find paperwork on that and so we counted the last one, rent is just even for that amount. So that's, that's where we are in this property. Now, we had an appraiser, an official appraiser do the appraisal for this and that came out to $284,000.
It's not for the house, it's for the property on the lake. I own on the lake and that's, that, you know.
That's what the appraiser came out as. And then the true, the true cash value.
What's the size of the lot? What's the size of the lot?
It's small.
Okay.
But the true, the true cash value that the assessor's number was 140, so a huge, a huge difference in that house. And so, and obviously the house is in, that is, that is where we are at on this. So I, I mean, it's reasonable at this point saying that we should go over three meetings is, this is the first time that we're seeing it as an official decision item. We have talked about it before, but as a decision item, it would make sense to determine how we're going to determine the bidding and then actually open up bids next month and then till the month after this.
Okay. Is it possible to come on the two real estate agents that live in Dalton Township or pay a lot of rent, pay a lot of taxes in Dalton Township to give us a separate comparative count?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, I would say that's, that's the type of motion we're looking for, is how we want to come up with a minimum bid. That's what we want to do in this meeting right now.
I hate business cards. Yes. Did you hear what she said?
Yes.
I hate your business cards.
So I make the motion to allow these realtors to help us figure out the dollar value of this property at 2370 Duff Road. I second that.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion among the board?
Just a minute.
And then with that information, I'll bring it as a decision item to next month's meeting for the board, putting it up for a minimum amount on bidding.
Well, may people just listen or is it for just?
We do it ourselves.
We're gonna do it ourselves.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any other discussion among the board? Here are none, roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
Renee?
Absolutely, yes.
Lee?
Yeah, I like the arbitrariness of asking.
Okay, Christie, yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the contract with the road commission. And so these are the, the numbers we looked at before, when we're looking at the budget and everything, comes to our, the road commission, since they're recommending these projects, split it with us fifty-fifty, so this is the hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars that the township would be contributing. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the local road project contract with the city county ownership.
Motion by Nola, do it in a second.
Support.
Support by Lori, any other discussion among the board? Here are none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Christie? Yes. Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the Michalinda contract with the road commission, and so this is the contract that we're doing for the pay via, uh, Michalinda, and originally, the road commission board had passed this last October, and then after that, for three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars top line, and after that is when we got the deal on the, the mills that were put in there, the material that's in there now, and so these numbers were adjusted down to a top line of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. Initially, the, the road commission did not want to adjust those numbers in this form, we drew a line through them, we initial, and, and dated it, and when I sent that to them, they ended up adjusting the numbers, so the official numbers are, are typed in here now.
I make a motion to approve the Michalinda road project contract.
Motion, do we have a support? Support by Lee. Any other discussion among the board? Here are none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Christie? Yes. Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the Michalinda assessment payment, because we decided to put the property that goes to the horse drill on here, because it gets in traffic, then we obviously bill ourselves for that, and this, even though we approved it, the budget, we improved it in the resolutions, I wanted to have another board approval on it, so that's why we're seeing it now.
I'd like to pay the bills, so I make the motion to pay the Michalinda special assessment assessment, excuse me, for the Dalton Township property segment.
Motion in support, any other discussion among the board? Here are none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Christie? Yes. Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the start of our discussion items, the first one being the employee vacation policy, this was pointed out to me early once I got in, that there were some things in here that didn't work great, and so I, one of those things I was getting to as we got through other things, one of the things on the list to adjust. And one of the issues in here is there's some uncertainty about part-time or seasonal employees that we hire in maintenance, how many days they get off, because it currently reads that they get the number of days off that they would normally work in a week, but because that fluctuates by weather and by their schedule, it's not a very objective number, and it would be nice to just set that added number. Uh, we've, we've, we've been operating like it's three anyways, because you have to fix something in there, and so free vacation and two, uh, paid personal time. And so it'd be nice to set that there, and then the other major issue with it is that you, there's a certain amount of vacation and paid personal time that you can add up to, and after that, it won't roll over, a certain amount will roll over, after that it won't roll over, but the township policy also doesn't pay it out. And now, that's, it's not a particular issue for, for a kind of people, the, the most obvious person that's at issue for it is the chief, because the reason, the obvious objection to this is that he should've taken the time in the past, all right? But we've had, just because there's some questions over this, over the last four months that comes to, we've, he's been tracking this closely, and so over the last four months, he's put in an extra above his normally scheduled chief duties, four-hundred-and-four hours. So he's coming out at about an extra one-hundred hours per month, and so difficult to schedule vacation and personal time in there, because someone has to cover those shifts, we can't have emergency services not on a response. And so he obviously, he maxed out, you know, many, many years ago, those numbers, and more than that doesn't roll over, and they didn't get paid out. And so it's not a great thing to necessarily adjust going, going back and trying to crack, because it's what the policy was at the time, but we should fix it moving forward, and I think it's reasonable for the amount that won't roll over to, to do a payout.
May I speak?
Yes.
I like this on the record, this was not my request. Period, I did not ask for this, I did not, this is not me questioning the amount that is owed to me. I want zero in return, fix it for the next person. I'll take my thirty-three weeks that I didn't get and just let it go away after twelve years, fix it for the next person. This is not, and I have nothing to it, I told you yesterday this morning, I do not want to be a part of this, moving forward, correct. If I get to use my vacation, great, if I don't, then I don't. Whatever you decide, please do not, and citizens, please do not think this was made in the department. I will have not.
It's just one of those policies that, well, on both of those things, the, the uncertainty for some of the grounds crew and maintenance, and how many days do I actually get off? And I, I read the policy, and I'm not sure, which is not ideal. And then, and then on this, same, same type of issue, uh, like, I mean, there's just, there, there's no good way to resolve this, the way the policy sits down, so it's just a discussion item, I don't have a motion drawn up or anything for it, but I wanted to see if it would make sense to just set that objective number for the days off in the one case, and then to make it so that if at the end of the year, someone has vacation that they didn't use, plus they filled up, up the rollover amount, do we want to make it a policy that we're paying out the, the time over that amount?
I should add that. I, I, I do, Chief Stiles, I think you're an amazing man.
It's not, it's not, this is every township.
But it's, but it's, it's your heart, it's your heart too, though, because how many other employees are pulling all the hours that you hire, I get, for the rest of them doing that?
I, I chose, I, they can't, it's a part-time, I chose this behavior, I chose this career, it does not bother me, I never had one, the town, it's not an issue to me.
Right.
The issue needs to be, we need to be the next employees. Our two deputies that we have, they're full-time employees to deserve corporate benefits.
And our zoning.
There's not, there's not this discussion, this discussion, it's what's happening to the deputies here in the future.
Right, yeah, so we, yeah, if we crack it moving forward, then.
And it does, it takes a long time to hit that rule over.
It does.
It takes a lot of years, but it does happen.
Where should the chief?
Well, it's, it's chief.
It puts in a lot of hours.
Anything else from the board on that?
No, I'm good. I'd like to see something done up. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll write one. Next, we have the noise ordinance, so this was triggered because of the, the issue with Thunderbird, and their special use of extending their time, and an inconsistency existing between that use and other people in the township. Now, the noise ordinance falls under the general ordinance, under the nuisance ordinance, and so I included the nuisance section in here, and you can see that the noise ordinance is quite, it's quite extensive.
Yeah.
Uh, and I wanted to get the, get the board's opinion on what they, what they think of it, if they think it should be adjusted, and if they think it should be adjusted, what they think it should be done.
First of all, there's, it, you know, my aunt heard a man screaming at one-thirty in the morning, and it scared her. She dials nine-one-one, the cops show up. Do they see where the man is that's screaming? No, not at all. So that's a noise nuisance that happened, but there's no way to really enforce a lot of it. So there's a, there's a lot in, I read this thing, I was like, oh my, really? Yeah, yeah, it's quite entertaining.
Yeah, it's quite extensive, and, and most of those types of restrictions come about because there was some sort of issue, you know, and I mean, it even mentions singing loudly, and I, after, after ten p.m., four, seven a.m., and I, I assume those types of things come about because there was some sort of incident, most likely, probably something like a feud between neighbors, which is extremely common, and someone going out and singing in front of someone's house or something.
Damn it.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure on that, but why else would it be in there? Soon, and we, we get stuff like that a lot, right, of neighbors disagreeing, and.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if, if the board had any other questions on it, any suggestions on it, any direction that they would like to see things adjusted or amended, or if they wouldn't like to see changes?
Yeah, there's been recent complaints pertaining that besides thunder. We already passed the thunderbird to exempt.
I, I don't think we've had, we, we haven't had a ton of noise complaints. Now, last year during the summer, we had more noise complaints, and, and we always have some coming in, and usually it's something like dogs barking nearby, we have a commercial issue with that, but we have an issue just between residential neighbors in different places, um, wrecking of cars late at night, that type of stuff, playing of loud music late at night becomes a thing.
Fireworks.
So roosters, fireworks, Cedar Creek's having a huge issue now with firing guns, um, late at night, and so there are, there are things that kind of steadily come up.
And I think I saw here, you can't have a diesel mower running for more than five minutes, you know, and it's like, when you're, you read something like that, it's like wintertime, you can't let your, your diesel vehicle warm up for more than five minutes?
Somebody has to complain.
Like reject.
Right.
Correct.
And we don't have any complaints.
Yeah, it ends up complaint driven.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of complaints, I don't know that we need to address anything, address it at this point.
I mean, that's.
Because we're addressing.
That's fair enough, and we'll, like, they, they include an enforcement process in the abatement of nuisance there, they say, and we've been adjusting the enforcement process, so hopefully it's, it's more objective, it's due by due process, uh, and that's one of the things we're working on, especially, we've only been working on it for quite a while, working some things out there, and they both know, because they've seen it, the zoning board appeals in the planning commission, so, and I'm hoping that we would also implement something like that into the general ordinance moving forward, but we definitely need to, to get it smoothed out, so. All right, next, we have camping. And so this was, uh, this was the idea of camping on your own land in township, and it's, uh, at least a sixty-year debate, and because, so what I've included in here is the, the ordinance we have now, which is under temporary special use permits, and if you wanna use a camping trailer as a residence, then you can get a temporary special use permit from the zoning administrator for up to thirty days, if you have access to unlimited sanitary facilities of some sort on, on that piece itself, or on a neighboring piece. And I believe that was specifically emphasized in the Lake Residential Zoning District with some of their lots. But we have, I, I ended up getting from the village, it was very, very nice that someone from the village still had one of the original zoning ordinances, it's framed over there, from nineteen fifty-seven, which the entire zoning ordinance sticks on that one sheet.
Wow.
And so I had Andrea draw, we only have the physical copy that, that I got copied, and so I had Andrea draw up this, that they had from, from that, I, I believe the Zoning and Neighboring Act in Michigan was passed in nineteen forty-three, I think, and I don't have piece of paper to confirm this, but I think Dalton passed zoning ordinances for the first time in nineteen fifty-three, a decade later, and then we have a nineteen fifty-seven copy of this, so this one I have. And it deals with tents and trailer coaches, and so there's various restrictions on this. The main issue in here, just one part of the section four references section one, um, for trailer A and T district, the trailer district at that time, and then that references another section about tourist cabins and overnight cabins and motels. And the biggest hangup that I see ends up becoming the, the sanitary facilities and access to them, is very similar to what we have now, back in nineteen fifty-seven, although I think the limit was three months instead of thirty days, but you still had to have access to sanitary facilities. And so it's, so it's an old thing, it's, it's not new.
So here's my question, if someone had a parcel of land, let's just say an acre, and they, they pay taxes on that parcel of land, and they live in Florida, but they wanna be able to come back here with their fifth wheel, whatever, and they wanna park it there, because they wanna come back to Dalton Township and spend a month here to spend with their grandchildren. At this moment, they're not allowed to do that?
They are, they have.
In general, correct.
If they have access.
That's, that's not what I said, though. That's what I'm saying, they, they, so on their land.
They can't do it without a permit.
Okay, so they can come back, though, with a permit and stay on their land for thirty days?
Correct, if they have access to the sanitary.
If, if the permit, yeah, they have to have.
Okay, so, so right now, they cannot do that?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's my point.
But they're paying taxes, but they have to buy a permit?
No, they can't even do it, because they don't have access to bathrooms, even though their fifth wheel or their RV has them on their, on door.
Collection's on, right?
That's my, that's my question.
That is a problem.
But I can ask a friend, or that person can ask a friend, can I go park in your driveway? Yes, and though that person has an RV, and they want to have a, a parcel of land that pays taxes on it, and have a vested interest in that township, and they can't park on their own land, but they can park in their neighbor's driveway.
Correct.
That's a good point.
The neighbor has a toilet, yes.
The neighbor has a toilet, they're not gonna let me in, you know, they're gonna want me to use my own RV. So that's kinda where I'm, I'm kinda questioning, and, about why, why that, boondocking, let's just call it boondocking, but if I own them, if somebody, I must, I keep saying I, but if, if I, if I owned a piece of land, and I have a vested interest in it, not living there, I'm just coming to temporarily come to this area with, because I wanna keep that parcel of land, I might build on it someday.
Correct.
But I'm paying taxes on it, and I'm not allowed.
You're gonna buy law in almost every county.
I understand, and there's a lot of places.
So I don't wanna get a law of Michigan.
Yeah.
There's. Really, I wanna say, because I don't park in Mason County. You don't, you, you have to have a dwelling. I can park, we can park trailers on there, but you have to have a dwelling.
Is that a state law, or is it?
It is, it's, I believe it's a, it's, it's wherever.
Is it in the state constitution?
Well, the, I think the sanitation is part of the state statute.
But if a fifth wheel has a motor in it, you know.
It has to be done.
There's, I mean, there's state and county rules, though, through their, through their health departments, I don't know what they all are.
That's why it's a discussion.
It is a discussion, but I'm just saying, they're, they're, they're only ever.
Why they have a K O A.
But then, but then when you're doing K O A, you're paying how many hundreds of thousands of dollars to stay there for a month? Okay, so how are we gonna make sure that they're, who's gonna expect their trailers to make sure that their septic systems and everything work? And that's the part that I guess I'm getting to, is how much governmental reach do we want?
Well, you, you don't have a choice, I mean, we can't, we can't, you can't have a trailer with, with sewer, sewage dropping down on the ground. We're dealing with that issue right now with the resident, okay? So who's gonna, who's gonna police it?
We have well water. We don't want their sewer.
Who's gonna police it? The way, the reason it's written this way is, even if you have a tenant, you have access to. I get a tenant, I get a tenant, there are lots of trailers out there that don't have, that don't have black water, gray water, so that could be part of, well, and that's the thing, it's a discussion to talk about.
Discharge is different than just having the X's.
Right.
Well, you get more people buying land and staying in their camper, because it's much cheaper that way.
For thirty days, that's all they get.
Yeah, we're not Florida.
Pull it off the back of you.
Yeah, so I mean, it, I mean, it's a difficult one, you know, because something being in place like that for, for so long, I mean, it carries something, because the township was developed in that direction, right? So I think that the general direction of zoning ordinances has developed incorrectly for about a century, but from, from the nineteen twenties were the major court cases, right? Uh, and there was, I mean, the nineteen twenty-four case, the Village of Euclid versus Amler Realty Company, that was part of the Northern District of Ohio, was overruled on the Fourteenth Amendment, and, Cornell doesn't like history, but it was, uh, but it was turned down on the Fourteenth Amendment, it's, it's an interesting, it's an, it's an interesting case, because if you read it, which I found impossible to find online, um, but if you read it, and then you compare it to the nineteen twenty-six Supreme Court case that it was appealed to, where there was a six-three split vote, where it ended up going through, they read extremely similar in their finding, but one rules a constitutional, one rules unconstitutional, I think the, the ordinances, the laws would've developed completely differently, and I think there was some major shady stuff that's pretty easy to determine in the nineteen twenty-six twenty-six Supreme Court case. We can go into that more later as a point if someone wants. But it's, it's difficult to then walk that back in gigantic steps. And we're obviously trying to, like with the agricultural ordinances and stuff, you know, we're working with them in a, in a big way in some of the business things, I mean, the overly restricted signs and a bunch of different things. We've got the root trip ordinance, and so we've been moving in that direction. This one, I think, is a difficult and complex one because you're dealing with an area that obviously falls under public health, which definitely draws into county and, and the state. And with the dean there since nineteen fifty-seven, it's, it's developed strongly in this direction, or it's been pretty consistent, I assume, I've looked at every ordinance change since nineteen fifty-seven. But it's been pretty consistent, you know, for sixty years, so it's, it's certainly not a, not a simple issue, I would say.
I understand. If we're going to change, if we're going to, if this is something we really want to look at, then you have to take it to, the planning commission has to take it.
Correct.
It has to go to the planning commission, the planning commission's got to look at it, and they have to delve into, I mean, our, I don't see this as just us, the township arbitrarily saying, hey, you can't, you can only park your camper in a yard where you have access to a septic system. There had to be a reason behind it in the first place. And there is a reason why you don't get to park a trailer on an empty lot, because at what point does it become just a temporary use to, oh, I'm going to live here now? And that's, and that's, yeah, so we, but the planning commission is, they, that's what we're going to, that's what you want to do, we said it to them. Did you ever get rid of that one that we're still working on? And that's the issue, I mean, that's, that's how we.
You've got enough publicly alone, and he's not, he doesn't have gray water.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you, it has to go, if it's something that the township wants to look at, then it has to go back to the planning commission and they have to research it, because there had to be a reason, there had to be a reason why the township said you have to have access to septic. And, and that would be, I mean, hey, that's.
Mr. McCormick, I would love to hear what you think.
I just want to say real quick, we, we, we just amended that camping, the camper ordinance, I mean, like, three, four years ago maybe?
That's what I thought, yeah.
We, we looked at it quite hard, did a lot of stuff with it to make it more flexible than we did for a reason, but it was only a few years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't.
To allow it more flexibility, but yet still keep. And your box was clean.
For the health.
Yes, yeah, so, I mean, we just visited it.
I mean, it isn't, yeah, it wasn't the township or trailer, trailer saying you can't put stuff on your property, there is a reason. I mean, there are health issues. And I get, you know, there are a lot of fifth wheels that have, you know, black waters, tanks that collect, but there are a lot that don't, and we're just going to, we're just going to police that.
Make them run a porta john.
There you go. That's a great idea.
Or put in their well and septic, like the Russell's have to do.
Well, that's it, that's it, exactly. Or you get one that's on property for three years, one of those porta johns. We had it for three years, right on the beach, right across from my house.
Oh, no, no, thank you. I'm so sorry.
I'm just saying.
So it becomes a big issue, it's a huge part of civilization, the history of civilization, sanitary.
Well, they just did it three weeks, no prior to me.
Correct.
Yeah, those people are long gone, but it, but it did, it was there for three years, and I bitched about it, and so what?
Yeah, when you were talking about the review, yeah, it happened before we were in.
Yeah, I did bitch.
I had asked Steve Kerr about it, and he said, if I remember correctly, don't quote, if I'm quoting you wrong, forgive me, uh, incorrect me, but you said that there had been quite a few people that had asked you about this exact question, and just wondered if it's been, what do you, what's your opinion on it?
Yeah, every now and again, I'll get people that ask, hey, I have property, are you going to buy property in Dalton Township? I put my camper out there, and that's.
Right now, it is a no.
Right now, it's a no unless there's the adjacent, adjacent house with sanitary services with unlimited use.
I assume we all got well water.
All right. Anything else? Do we, I mean, do we want to push that to the flag?
It sounds like it's already been, it sounds like it's already been discussed.
All right, we will go to the sewer rate ordinance, which we majorize for everyone in the township. And so the, the township has been in a bad financial spot as far as the sewer finances since the two thousand and six projects, I think most people are aware, especially when that line was run up Whitehall Road, and Michigan Adventures being connected, and Trailer Park went bankrupt, and a few other businesses, and so it's, it's in a rough spot. And we've been looking at having the sewer rate study done, we've had a sewer rate study done over a decent period of time, we've been looking at what, what would need to happen to sort out the finances. And I, I think it's been ignored to a decent extent because it's a difficult problem to tackle, and it's going to bring up a bunch of, well, probably hate, right? I'm guessing I'm going to get a bunch of people to hate me. But it's, it's very important to actually resolve. And so that's part of my initiative with selling property, we're working on smoothing it out, but by generating an extra half a million dollars in revenue and putting that into the sewer debt, where the township can do, because the township acquired twenty-nine-hundred Whitehall Road, which was the old trailer park, and acquired it twice because it was sold out once for a few hundred dollars, then we can count that as paying down that debt as a township to itself essentially. But there is a bond on that that has to be paid. And the reality of that is, is that the sewer fund goes to exactly zero dollars in twenty-twenty-six, which is a huge disaster. There's two basic ways I think the disaster can go if it's pushed out to them. One is that the county cosigned for that amount of money, so the county would have to cover the bond. And then they would file paperwork with the state and take our state revenue sharing. And so the, the township would cut its budget by fifty-three percent is what the current is. Now, almost no one would ever do that, so once you get right up to it and the disaster is realized and then it can't be avoided, then you have to raise rates to whatever they need to be to make the finances work, which is a disaster of a situation. And so buying the township, putting a decent amount of money into it, which means that everyone in the township is carrying in part of the burden, because the, the money that we're generating by property sales is money that could go towards something else and isn't because it's going towards the sewer debt. And so that's, that burden has to be carried by everyone in general to get the rates to the point where they don't go to, to an extreme level. Now, the last time that Dalton raised the sewer rates was in two thousand and eleven, up to twenty-five dollars per RU per month. We also are contracted for the section that Muskegon Charter owns along River Road with them at the normal rate of a hundred and twenty-five percent of their RU's. They've raised RU's over the years where Dalton Township hasn't. So we pay an effective rate to them of thirty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents per RU per month, which pushes at a deficit of the part along River Road of about twenty grand a year. And then, because of the way the finances did not work out, and some of that, some of the basics is that it was negotiated in twenty sixteen because the fund was going broke to be able to float it and need an infusion of cash. And for some reason, Michigan Adventures gave the township four hundred thousand dollars. Now, I read the two court of appeals cases, and the one court of appeals, I believe they came out with the finding that it would be reasonable for them to pay sixty to eighty thousand dollars. So for some reason, they were essentially nice to the township in there as far as I can find. Then the county was also nice in that they reimbursed the township for three hundred thousand dollars for flow meters. And so that seven hundred thousand dollars negotiated in twenty sixteen, but each one hit in the next year, so one hit in twenty seventeen, one hit in twenty eighteen, pushed that account going to zero out to twenty twenty-six, otherwise it would have been significantly earlier, of course. But there's still a couple million dollar gap on the amount of money on Whitehall Road portion, and then the yearly deficit of around twenty grand on the River Road portion. And so a significant issue that hasn't been addressed. And in two thousand and eleven, new ordinances were drawn up because there's holes in the ordinances for the sewer fund, which was pointed out by the person that we hired to do the rate study as well, municipal analytics. And so those were never passed, even though they were drawn up in two thousand and eleven, I'm not sure why. And so I'd like to revisit those and make sure that we addressed everything that was being brought up in the rate studies in those ordinances as well. And so that brings us to this resolution that I wrote, Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen. And this essentially goes through some of that history. And then it proposes raising rates above the amount that we paid to Muskegon Charter Township, raising them five dollars per month over three months to get to the forty dollars per RU per month, with the idea that we're continuing to put the amount of money that we're generating from land sales up to a half million dollars into that fund as well to, to make it so the rate doesn't have to jump any further. So if we bring it to that number, it's projected that moving into the future, the township would still have to review it yearly, but the rate increase yearly after that would be at four percent, so at a more reasonable level. It was difficult to come up with a graph that looked reasonable. It could be that over the next few years, we raise it thirty and twenty and things like that, and then they had higher rates going out into the future further though as well. So definitely an issue that has existed, and I, I understand that it's, that it's very difficult to address. But this is the, this is the plan and an idea that I have drawn up, puts us in good shape. And then we'll start doing some inspections on it as well, and scheduled with the head of the Department of Public Works to go through and just lift up manholes, look inside them, he apparently knows some of what he's looking at, and see what kind of shape it is. And then we allocated five thousand dollars for videoing of the sewer this year, which they will do partials, and so we can start doing a round on that. Because it's, you know, you could be looking at the classic government disaster of not having enough money, and then until the last minute, they don't really inform anyone of that, and then we also haven't been doing consistent inspections and no maintenance on it. And so you could have a disaster that sneaks up on you, and it's, you know, not, not an ideal situation, even though it's common. And we don't have to have hearings, and we don't have to send out notices on this, but that is, especially since rates haven't been raised since two thousand and eleven, it seems reasonable to send those out. So I wrote up notices, essentially a letter, including a graph, and including a proposed resolution, saying that we visit as a board as a decision item in the June meeting. So those are going out, did they look it up today?
They were in the mail today.
They went out today. So that people will know, and then they can show up and have a sure that there will be a lot of public comment next month. Any thoughts, comments, concerns among the board about all of that?
It's quite a project.
It is.
So how much do we owe altogether?
Well, the township, the township owes for Whitehall Road five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, because when the township took that, the twenty-nine-hundred Whitehall Road back, they paid two years on the special assessment, and then for whatever reason, they shut it off. And the balance was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand and change.
I guess because it was, it was a decent drain on the budget.
It was, it was a significant drain on the budget, but it didn't, it's not going away as we all know.
Right, we can't cancel our own debt and then not pay the bond that was pulled, so it's not actually a solution. It makes the budget look better for however many years you do that, but in the end, someone's got to pay the piper, and it's got to be the township. So it just pushed the problem out.
So we, so we owe five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and some change, and we brought in four hundred?
Well, we, there's two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that we approved, that's going to, I'm transferring from the trust and agency for land sales to the sewer fund, so that's going to drop the balance eventually.
Okay, but that's what I'm going to do.
And as we sell more, then we'll prove those as well.
And, yes.
Incremental.
Yep, exactly.
We've been moving pretty fast, generating that revenue. That's why the graph looks a little weird because there's, there's a big jump, I see right there. But there's, and these are all available online, the website is not great to manage and navigate through, working on that as well. But that's why there's a big projected jump in the amount of revenue that's from land sales.
In a year.
In the short, short future, yes. Any questions, comments, concerns on that?
So that's coming back in June, right, the resolution?
Correct, yeah, so we will have that as a decision item in June. All right, next we are to our second public comment, and I do have someone that wasn't able to make it to the meeting, so I sent an email that she wanted me to read in public on it, it was Michelle Mixa. And so I will read this. "I am Michelle Mixa, and I live in a Dalton Township. I'm a homeschooling mother of two who has moved several times to several states since my children were born. Each time we have lived, we have not only utilized the public parks, but our closest friendships were generally found and forged there. The community parks were places for our children to be friends, for families to gather and celebrate milestones together, and for dogs to socialize. Our family immediately noticed the lack of well-maintained and usable parks in Dalton. When I heard of the funds granted to our township, I immediately thought of the wonderful parks we have had in other communities, and believed strongly that we could have an opportunity to fill that void at this time. A dog park at Beagle Park would be an amazing addition to our township. People of all incomes, political lean, social backgrounds, ethnicities, religions, all walks of life gather at dog parks. At a time in our nation's history where people seem so divided and isolated, we could help unite our community in a local dog park. It's a wonderful place for people in the community to meet and get to know each other. According to the N A R P National Association of Parks and Recreation, more than eighty percent of people agree that dog parks are desirable in their localities. It is a place for dogs and people alike to socialize. A play park serves a similar function. Mothers often feel isolated and have a hard time finding local friends. Improving our two township parks would provide a place for families to come together and find local support systems. I strongly urge the board to invest funds into improving play parks and creating a dog park in Dalton Township, as my family hopes to make our home here our forever home. I'm happy to help as much as possible to make this vital improvement happen for our community. Thank you, Michelle Mixa." Any public comment on that? Any other public comments on anything? Jeff, you'd like to come up?
Hi, I'm Melissa DeHan, I live in fifteen-eight-hundred Staple, and my topic is on our parks. So the last master plan review and public survey indicated that our community supported renovation and expansion of our public spaces, including our parks. I know that there has not been a whole lot of effort, or not necessarily effort, but ability to address funding for the parks because we have a lot of budgeting and the non-planned events like the sewer issue that we brought up, that have to be addressed that, that place burdens on our, our resources that we have available to, to connect those So with, within our township, many of our parks have been maintained and supported by our volunteers. The volunteers have stepped up, they filled those gaps, they do fundraising efforts, they do cleanup efforts and maintenance efforts, and with very little request from expenses to be reimbursed by the township. Let me figure out where I'm at. Sorry. So our volunteers have been, what have been keeping what we have for our parks going, and they've been given their resources, both their time and their money and researching for different grants that are available to help fund our parks. But we've had very little support sometimes from the township, not necessarily this administration, but others as well. So what I'm asking is that, because volunteers have been giving so much of their lives to the community, and we have a small community, so we all rely on each other to make sure that these things continue, our, our parks are maintained, they're improved, they're, they're all from our community. So, you know, all I'm asking is please make sure you support your volunteers, make sure that you, you know, if they ask for resources, see what can be available to offer.
Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, some of the, some of the things of the horse trail were fairly lighter. You would put together the sign, and have the maintenance place in the ground, and then some of those signs for marking horse trails, which I, I'd been asked before the meeting about those, and so we do, having back here, I gave them the maintenance to, to put away, so we can find them after the meeting, because I'm not sure exactly where they're at, they might be back in the maintenance building. But yeah, parks have definitely been left in rough shape. As far as financing goes, because I know it's going to be more of an eye-in discussion among the board, for the lakes and parks, and, well, I bring a few different things here, but if we put in for the art funds, if we do about half, if we figure out the next two years into roads, and then we do some other things for a little bit of the building and stuff, hopefully things don't get too well, there's, there's immense expense that we could spend on this building for sure, because it's in rough shape in different, very, various different ways. But so if we spend a little over, right, so say four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars through all that, that leaves a little over three hundred thousand dollars between lakes and parks. We obviously have a bit of a disaster with the channel project, and then the Lake, Lake La Wada device has an ongoing thing, because it turns out that is slightly leaking, and the contractor is going out to review that soon, and the manufacturer of the actual device. But oddly enough, because looked at it and the water was balanced on both sides, it's an underground dam, and so the water was balanced on both sides, and if you have a dam where the water is the same on both sides, it means it's not damming the water, so that's, that's an issue. And so they're going to drain that, and they're supposed to correct it, but hasn't actually been drained in lakes because the engineering on the pipe that runs underneath the road on. that runs underneath the road on the south side of Twin Lake there is such that it has to be above the winter set levels. There's that six inches that's supposed to adjust on top, but the Lake Loveland device had been cut at one point and didn't function anymore. There's a Y I wanted to replace, and then Brenda wanted to do it because it's in her jurisdiction. So it has to get up to those levels to actually have enough pressure to push it out of the other end of the pipe anyways. And so, because I was wondering if it's clogged, but the Drain Commissioner, or Resource Commissioner, is also going to video underneath the section of the pipe underneath the road, because I thought maybe there were two things broken there. So we're looking at that soon. And then the channels themselves, the township had put in $84,000 before we got in, and they didn't work out great. Now, the water levels started dropping at that same point. They kind of went in at that peak period, which wasn't great timing. Obviously, the slide sides have started to collapse on that. The one in between Twin Lake and Middle Lake at one time, early last spring, could handle sea dews and boats, and so I think some of that wave action started to collapse. But then the township should have spent significantly more money to properly brace up those sides. And so they shorted the funding for that, which they were pulling directly out of general funds, which means everyone in the township carried a decent portion of the burden, whether they used the lakes or not. And then it wasn't enough, and we had, there was obviously the culvert controversy, which ended up not being a box culvert, a regular culvert, because the road commission had already delayed that project for a year and already owned it. And the township would have had to come up with an extra $70,000. And then to put in something like a seawall or rocks for the bracing, I mean, one section between Middle Lake and West Lake, the one side part of it is a swamp. And so to hold back a swamp, you need something. Something has to be there. And so it was just shorted on money, and I think it could eat a lot of money if we wanted to brace those back up. For dredging the actual boat launches, I reached out to three dredging companies, I think one in Grand Haven, one in Muskegon, one in What Halmonti or something like that. None of the larger dredging companies want to dredge the boat launches. They consider it a waste of the time, too small of a project. I also talked to Eagle about it, and we'd have to pull the permits, but because the one that most people are, seem to be concerned with, the one on Twin Lake, is county property, the county would have to pull the permits. And I talked to their head of parks about that, Bob, and he was potentially interested in it, but those expenses would have to be budgeted for at the, you know, through the county commissioners and everything for that. And so that's a discussion mostly at that level. And then you obviously have the Eagle permitting process. And I know Kim Martin, the supervisor over in Lakewood, she's been working on a project for six years on a varied lake. The last three years, she's been waiting on a permit from Eagle. So they can sometimes be ongoing things depending on what the project is and what it's like. So that's, some of that's. Yeah, yeah, I mean, and so the funding for the parks, we have to balance out. The funding for the parks and the lakes, we certainly have to balance out. And I think part of why it's been allowed it to degrade as far as the parks go is because you can essentially save money in the budget because we don't count it as depreciation. And so if you're really trying to tighten up the budget, which they've done at several points in the past here, you know, I mean, they cut a decent amount of money in '06. They knew they were having financial trouble, and so they cut money there, and you basically don't have to include that on the sheet anywhere, you just take care of it less. And I completely get that, and things, entropy exists, right? Everything's falling apart, and so that's the way it goes. And so we want to support that, but there certainly has to be a balance to it.
Both Carrie and I both went out to both Catalpa Park and Beagle Park over the last month and a half or so. Catalpa Park has swings that, the swings, most of them are just hanging by one side. They're not even functional. The structure itself, I believe, the metal, it doesn't look like it's safe.
I had to maybe start taking that equipment out, because we wouldn't qualify, we had a inspector that wouldn't qualify to be placed there. And so we want to get that stuff taken out. And then I figured potentially somewhere in our funds, put something in. I figured it'd go pretty light at Catalpa.
I would like to see just a swing set that redone, the swing sets and maybe some pictures.
Just replaced.
Yeah, just replace the swing sets, at the least for Catalpa Park. It's not nearly as frequented as, I've lived out here five, six years now, and I didn't even notice it back then.
Right.
No, there's a lot of people that use it.
There's a lot of kids that.
Oh, I'm sure there is, because we put up basketball court, the new, and that's last year. So I'm sure there are. And just right now, going out there, as a trustee, I was embarrassed.
The merry-go-round is broken too. It doesn't look like it's circles.
When I first went out to Catalpa, right, after I was first in and evaluating the equipment out there, I mean, it looks like a scene on a zombie economy. Right? And we had, I don't know if some people remember, but we had the open tits from the restroom that had burnt down a bunch of years ago. And so that was an odd thing to leave open. We brought it, I've written it for board a few times. But we got those taken care of, and then I started having the equipment taken out because it's, I mean, it's a rough place that, you know, that merry-go-round is quite a thing to see. And so we definitely need to do something there.
You know, beach sand, like you go down by Pier Marquette, you know, my aunt puts a sign up, free gluten-free beach sand, free, you know? So they want to get rid of beach sand. It's like, we just got to have means to haul it.
We got a dump trailer, we can get it.
See? That's all I'm saying. If there's a will, there's a way.
Well, and if you're putting, if you're putting beach sand in along the beach, you're supposed to have permits as well.
Yeah, isn't the DRT and R can vote in that?
Yeah.
County Commissioner, get him to see her.
Well, there's different, there's different things.
That was one of the complaints, we just had this deal with Fox Lake, and that was one of the complaints. Well, you know, you guys are putting sand out in the water, you can't do that. You gotta leave it as it is so that the lake can grow its weeds or do whatever it wants to. So you can't just.
Let's go get some sand and dump it.
They did it all the way around Twin Lake, and they got away with it, so.
Yeah, there's, I mean, the lakes, the lakes in general are a constant huge fight between everyone on the lakes with their neighbors, and then fights over the lakes. And there's the, I mean, in economics, it'd be called the tragedy of the commons, is one of the common examples is waterways. And so that's.
Just don't do it as a township. If you do it as an individual, you get away with it. But you start monkeying around in the township doing it, then.
Well, individuals should be pulling permits for too.
Well, but they don't.
Some of the people turn each other in, so.
Why?
You wouldn't do that.
And so, and then, yeah, I mean, with all of that, with all of that discussion, right, between all of those things, especially if we incorporate some aspects of this building, and then the parks and the waterways, and we want to fund the roads, and we need to do that because we need to free up some of the money that we've included in the budget because we included a line item for the property sales, which makes it look higher if we're putting that toward the sewer debt which we are. And so all of those things combined mean it ends up being important because we're talking about more money than we're getting by far. There wouldn't be a huge discrepancy.
I'd like to see a pie graph with, like, for example, just for easy numbers, we were getting $800,000 for that money. A pie graph, 53% of that going to roads, 27% going to parks. If there is a way to break that down so that we can see it, so that we kind of have an idea of what we're having to work with.
Yeah, we can do that.
Not just a money amount, because you can take a money amount, and it doesn't mean anything, and then it's wrong with things, but if you have a hole, then you can kind of, you can look at it visually, especially for ease.
I can generate a projected graph.
I like pictures.
All right, any other public comments on anything else? Yeah, if you want to come up or.
Arnold Johnson, 225 West Lake Road. One thing with the parks, we had a frisbee golf, and this board got rid of it. So it was here, all they had to do was put it in. With your thing with the noise ordinance, I was on the clinic last year with Jesse, and when Thunderbird opened, we required them to have a noise limiter on their machines. They couldn't run over so many decibels. It's in the books, it's enforced. That's what you need to check out, because their idea, if you're not enforcing, that's why they're running out. They told us that if they were running, you could not hear them on the road. That was their big thing. It was a restriction put in there for us. So maybe, maybe you guys should research that old word, something we allow them. That was.
Yeah, there's the disc golf course, right? So when I came in, they bought a disc golf course set from Fruitland that they had taken out. And so that was a bad direction to go financially. If you have a bunch of parks that you're not maintaining, to allocate a bunch of money and a bunch of time through maintenance and more land to add in more parks that you're then also not going to take care of, certainly a bad plan. So I sold those off. And then the, as far as the noise enforcement, to a decent extent, you're hoping that they can keep that down on their own because you're on very shaky ground moving into the legal sphere there. There was a court case just in the last couple of years out of Grand Rapids about measuring things by decibels and enforcing them. And I can't remember exactly what level it got up to, not the lowest level, so it might have been Court of Appeals, and they found that even with the measurement of decibels over the restricted amount, that it was non-enforceable. So the precedent definitely doesn't lean in the direction legally of enforcement on that. I understand.
So in other words, you don't want to enforce it?
No, incorrect, so.
Do you have an ordinance officer, which I don't think do, but.
We do have an ordinance officer.
He's got an ordinance, a decibel meter. They told us they would keep it below that decibel. All you got to do is check that. And it was in that part of the ruling, we could shut them down if they operated above that noise. So we went through the planning commission, we got it. Now to enforce it, that's another thing.
630 West Green Road, only lived here for about a little over a year now, but hearing some of these people talk about the boat launch, like, I don't live on a lake, but I think being in the summer right now, and I think that'd be a really good thing to consider, like, thoroughly, of really helping these people out, you know, they pay late taxes. And not only that, they're going to have family members over, I mean, not everybody lives on a lake, you know, and to, you know, and it's like, if they have a bad experience there because the boat launch is terrible, then they're going to remember that. Kids will remember that, you know what I mean? I just, I really, and I desire to have a boat one day. Being a builder, I know excavators who would probably take their, give you a price to just come down there and scoop some dirt and level it out a little bit, you know? I don't, but I don't know, again, the laws and regulations between touching, you know, the grounds like that and the wetlands like that, so I don't understand this. But I feel for these people who really just live on the lake and can't get their boats in, so.
Sorry, what was your name again?
Sup, Dexter.
Hey, if someone wants to put in quotes, because I've reached out for them, I haven't got any quotes on dredging out the boat launch area, then they're free to. There'll obviously be much more of a discussion moving forward through, because that has to be through the counting and stuff, but it'd be nice to have some numbers on what it'd be.
The biggest thing you're going to get is the DNR government, I'll guarantee you that.
DNR government's not, if you can get them out here.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, the DNR didn't seem too concerned with it. They would not give us a quote if they did it, because they have their own team, so, and they would not recommend anyone either. But other than that, they didn't seem too concerned about it. But the DNR is huge. And so it depends on which people you're talking to and which agency. Actually, I got some information recently on lake levels from the Fisheries, and they have some documentation, very light, they're also having the documentation from the 1940s and 50s, that there was an unusual drop in these lakes at that time that was unexplained. And so they think what might be happening now is similar, that there's a natural drop in all of the water. I mean, I have the charting graphs from Lake Michigan going back to 1918, and the nearest federal spot for testing saturation of groundwater is in Aspiria, and that's dropped nine inches in the last two years, so it's a pretty sharp downturn, just like Lake Michigan. But these lakes too, as a lot of people are saying, they seem to be affected more greatly. And that was, as far as the DNR is concerned, wasn't explained in the 1940s and 50s, but seems to be some part of unknown natural cycle.
Yeah, but just boat launch, it would be four water drops.
Oh, the boat launch is a separate, yeah. But I mean, it's related, but somewhat separate. Any other comments on anything? Nope? All right, any kind from the board?
I do, I just have a, I just have a comment. I want to, I want to say a very, very thank you to my election workers for the May 3 election. My people, they went a little beyond for me. I had a lot of changes, and I've had a lot of new people step up, and everything went really well, and I can't thank them enough. So, and I have some board, I have some people out here in the audience, I just want to say thank you to everyone, so.
Yeah, yeah, I really do appreciate that because I think we all know that some things are going to be controversial this year. So it's great that people are willing to step up into the roles and participate and contribute in that way, and continue to do so. Good, any other comments from the board? I was looking for a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn. Support.
Except for the hour.
Wow. I couldn't do that. That's fucking awful.